Good afternoon, everyone. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it's located on Treaty Six territory and Meati Nation Region Number Four. These are the traditional territories ancestral lands of indigenous peoples, including the Plains Cree Nation, the Yasinawachi, Winuaq Rocky Mountain First Nations, Stony, Sutina, Dakota, Desaline, Soto, Mountain Meati, Mecheef, and many other communities that can continue to enrich the land on which the town of Hinton was established. And with that sentiment, I'd like to call the special meeting of council for July twelfth. Call it to order at four oh two. All right, so it looks like council we're going to have a motion to go into closed session. Counsel Levar.
We will go in closed session.
Thank you, Counsel Levar, all those in favor. And that is carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. Please just let me know. Okay, thank you. Welcome back, counsel. We're coming out of the closed session. We're looking to now adopt the agenda for this special meeting of council this evening. Any movers on that? Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move to adopt the special meeting of council agenda for July twelfth.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. Counsel, all those in favor? And that is passed unanimously. We have one delegation presentation, so JDP Lasserman, Lasserman Associates audio, audit review for 2021. I'll turn it over to self, Mr. Telfer.
Again, Edward Telford with GDP Wasserman. We'd like to thank the town on a successful audit. We've provided a clean audit opinion on the draft financial statements dated December thirty first, twenty twenty one. And we've signed off on July twelfth, twenty twenty two. We are therefore looking for a motion from council to approve those draft financial statements for finalization and release to the public.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Telford. ICO handling any comments or anything to from your side?
Sir, just would like to thank Mr. Telford for joining us here this evening in person and the hard work of Ruth Shelby and their team in getting this across the finish line and before council here this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, ICO handling. So counsel, we have a recommendation. Any movers to adopt this draft? Counsel Levar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that council approved the draft consolidated financial statements of the town of Hinton for the year ended December thirty first, twenty twenty one as presented.
Thank you, Counsel Levar. Counsel, any questions, comments on the motion? All right, then I'm going to call it a question. We're gonna just for the public. So we have Counsel Taylor joining us by Zoom, so we're going to vote in the traditional way. So we're going to move, Counsel Levar moves that council approve the draft consolidated financial statements of the town of Hinton year end December thirty first, twenty twenty one as presented. All those in favor? And that is passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Telford and to ICO handle it and also to all the crew back there that made this happen. So thank you very much for that. All right, so we are going to move on to now our action items. But we right, what's that?
I'm so sorry, sir. We have dealt with five.
Five ones. Thank you. Yes, we're going to move on to five point two now for the library contract for services agreement. And ICO handling.
Thank you, sir. It is my privilege, one more time to have the Director of Community Services take counsel through this. This is the town of Hinton Library Board Contract for Services, and it is on page thirty one of your agenda package. Laura, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair through to counsel. So, as you know, there's been a letter of understanding between the town of Hinton and the municipal library board since twenty sixteen, even though we've had a long-term relationship with them for many, many decades. Last year, there was an agreement between both parties to move towards something that's a little bit more robust and would help explain this unique relationship that we have in our community. Over the last year, there's been really great collaboration among the town departments that have contributed. The board, the board members, the library staff, and as well as the province and the role that they have in the two ministries for municipality and library. On May twenty fifth, there was a meeting hosted between council and the library board where the council had the opportunity to see this, the whole sort of contract for services in its entirety. It was discussed with the board at that time. Committee also saw it saw it at the committee of the whole meeting on June twenty eighth, where committee had the chance to take a look at it and see if there were any amendments they would like to make. There were none directed at the time. And so before you this evening is a recommendation from administration that council approved the town of Hinton Library Board Contract for Services Agreement as presented. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Howarth. Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to administration on page thirty seven of fifty seven under term and termination. So my question is to terminate this agreement. It is written notice no less than two years. Why the two years? I know we have talked about that before, but why the two years?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through to Counsel Reese. Typically, libraries are completely autonomous. They have their own, everything from WCB to their own sorry, OHNS programs, legislation, all of that kind of thing. And so because we're very integrated with them, they would have to create all of those from scratch, basically, and it would take, it could take up to two years to do that. They would have to have all their own financial systems in place, payroll systems. Like I said, OHNS, WCB, all of those systems in place, which is what, as you can see through the agreement, those are all the things that the town provides to them right now for support. So everything in this agreement that the town does to support their operations and their services to the community, they would have to go and establish those for themselves. Even for example, the collective agreement, they would have to go and create that themselves with a separate collective agreement with the union than the one from the town. So that's again, and just working with the province, the public services, sorry, this public library services branch to get them established as an independent, is a much more independent sort of operation than the way the way they are now, and that's anticipated to take up to a couple of years. Particularly, sorry if I may add, if if we want to continue without an interruption of service, because at the same time, we would need to continue to operate and provide those services to the community.
Thank you, Ms. House. Counsel, any other questions to administration on this matter? Or any motions? Counsel Taylor.
Yeah. I'm going to make a motion because I'm not comfortable with the two-year termination clause in a contract that doesn't have any contract dates on it, you know, start-finish contract dates, and I don't want to beat that horse because I thought that horse is dead from last meeting. But my motion is that council direct administration to modify clause twenty eight such that either party can terminate the agreement to the other party no less than one year with no less than one year written notice of its intention.
It's gender, Amy Campbell, do you need that repeated? Could you please Counsel Taylor repeat that? So we can log it.
That council direct administration to modify clause twenty eight such that either party can terminate the agreement to the other party with no less than one year's written notice of its intention.
We're just gonna make sure we get this and get it up and it's correct.
You just one moment, sir.
Yeah. So Counsel Taylor, I'm just going to read it out for you because I know that you're unable to see it, but it reads that council direct administration to modify clause twenty eight such that either party could terminate this agreement upon providing to the other party no sorry, no more. No less, okay, no less than one year written notice of its intention to do so.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. And would you like to speak to it?
Just briefly. I don't see the likelihood that we would have to do this to be high at all. This would be probably a one in a million thing. But considering that we have something that's extremely unusual here already, and that's a management contract without any contract dates on it at all. Waiting two years if that one in a million search situation occurred in order to get out of the contract just doesn't seem to be prudent in my mind. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Taylor. All right, Counsel, so we have a motion on the table. Any comments? Questions about it? I'm gonna then to speak to it. Unfortunately, I can't be in agreement to this. And I think if it wasn't just for I would be in agreement of it if it was just for establishing the as, as I, or Ms. Howarth mentioned in regards to OHS and all the other, you know, financials and everything I could see. My, the issue that I see the biggest would be the union and coming up with a whole separate agreement. And my worry is, and I agree, it's a one in a million shot, but if it were to happen, it could drastically interfere with the services that we currently provide in our community. And there's a number of individuals that utilize that. So I just, you know, can't, can't be in favor of one year based on everything that need would need to be put in place to continue the services. So thank you. Counsel, any other comments? Before I called a question then? All right, then I'll call this the question. And thank you. Again, the counsel, Counsel Taylor moves that council direct administration to modify clause twenty eight such that either party can terminate this agreement upon providing to the other party no less than one year written notice of its intention to do so. Counsel, all those in favor? All right, and counsel, all those opposed? And that is defeated. Three to two, three to two. Thank you. All right. Counsel, any other questions on this matter or motions? Counsel Stashak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that council approved the town of Hinton Library Board Contract for Services Agreement as presented.
Thank you, Counsel Stashak. Any comment? Speak to it?
No, no, thank you.
All right, so counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Any comments, questions? Debate? All right, then we'll call that the question then. That council approved the town of Hinton Library Board Contract for Services Agreement as presented. All those in favor? Right, and that is carried unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Right, and I want to say thank you to Ms. Howarth. I'm not sure she's staying till the end. But I want to thank you for all the years of service that you provided this town. It's going to be missed. And thank you for, you know, your presentation on the last round. So and good luck in your future endeavors and where you're headed and with your new council. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the kind words, and I certainly wish counsel, the organization and the community all the best.
Thanks very much. Sure, you don't want to stay for the rest? All right. All right, counsel, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, action item. The request to waive portion of property taxes owed. And I believe ICO handling handed over to you.
Thank you, sir. Through the Deputy Mayor to all of council on this matter. This is a this is a proposal that you have seen recently, although now modified and returning to council. Just a reminder that all manufactured home or trailer parks in the town of Hinton, the owners are required and do pay municipal taxes and levied requisitions on the parklands. Then individual pad renters within the parks are responsible to pay municipal taxes and levied requisitions for these improvements. As mentioned, I believe a week ago, unfortunately, and until the last couple of years, the town of Hinton has failed to manage and enforce certain arrears on some of these placements per the requirements of the Municipal Government Act Regarding Tax Arrears Properties. In this instance, the manufactured homeowner, and this is located at number two, one forty-five East River Road, has previously appeared before council and requested the entire outstanding balance of his property taxes owed to the town. That's taxes and requisitions totaling three thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents be waived. Counsel denied this previous request, and on July fifth, two thousand twenty-two, this manufactured home was added to the town's list of twenty twenty-two public auctions of tax arrears properties with a scheduled auction date of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two at four P M. Following that, and on Wednesday, July sixth, the owner of this manufactured home attended the town office and requested a meeting with myself. He reiterated his frustration with the town's efforts to collect outstanding taxes and the subsequent interest penalties for his improvements, some of which predate his purchase of the manufactured home. At this time, the property owner offered a one-time payment of fifteen hundred dollars to fully clear his account, and I want to stress, and you do see in the recommended action, the, a, a a indication of waiving eighteen hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. That is the amount left owing after a fifteen hundred dollar payment. It was indicated to this individual that neither myself or administration has the capacity to accept this and to settle his account, and that it would have to come back before council. And so the interim C A O is brought this back here. At the bottom page fifty-five in your agenda package, you do see a bit of a breakdown. You do see just the taxes from two thousand and nine to two thousand and sixteen. This is the taxes and requisitions on this property for those years totaling nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. Then the taxes from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-two, again, property taxes and requisitions, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. The significant amount that you see here is the penalties. And correctly, that actually should read two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty-two, fourteen hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. So under the Town of Hinton Tax Rate Bylaw, we have essentially three three times a year that an individual's in arrears in their taxes that we levy escalating and differential rates of penalties and interest collection on this. And then at the end of each year, that third one accrues the previous years as well. So it's a bit of a it obviously totals up quite a bit as you see here in this, in this amount. There was two expenditures made over this period of time where the town incurred some costs which are identified as recovery fees. They totaled one hundred and six dollars. You do see a payment made by the property owner in two thousand and seventeen of a hundred and six dollars and sixty-three cents, which was actually just the property taxes for that year in two thousand and seventeen. That leaves the two thousand twenty-two outstanding property tax amount at three thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. As I mentioned earlier, if if the town were to accept this one-time payment of fifteen hundred dollars, it would require waiving the remaining eighteen hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cent to settle the outstanding tax amount. Again, as confirmed on July fifth, administration will continue to enforce tax arrears on all such placements when necessary, properly and consistent with requirements of the act and not allow enforcement or collection on other placements to follow to compliance with the act. With that, I will read into the record the recommended action that council approves the request from Conrad Polichuk to waive eighteen hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents of the tax, of the property taxes owed for number two, one four five East River Road roll one zero zero two zero, and that the town accepts a payment of fifteen hundred dollars prior to July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two to clear the remaining back taxes and penalties as was, as well as the levied two thousand twenty-two property tax payment. Sir, with that, administration is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, ICO handling. Counsel, any questions for administration? Counsel Taylor.
CEO handling, one of my concerns would be that if I vote for this, I might set a precedent, but I believe that the reason why I wouldn't be setting a precedent if I voted for this is because we won't be in the future allowing back taxes to increase, to accumulate for up to thirteen years as in this case. So we're only going to be allowing them to increase in the future for three, four years at most. So this shouldn't set a precedent because we're going to change the way we do things. That's what I understand from last meeting.
ICO handling.
Sir, thank you, and Counselor Taylor is exactly correct. It is certainly the intention of administration to ensure that we adhere to the three-year cycle actually under tax collections. So we have to properly notify the property owners in years one and two, and we need to be and should be under the Municipal Government Act moving to the tax auction process in the third year of arrears. And it is the intention of administration to ensure that we're doing that correctly in the case of all delinquent properties in the future.
Okay, thank you, ICO handling. I have Counsel have Counsel Stashak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question for administration, I guess. I'm not familiar with how title transfers on mobile homes. Is title registered as it would be with with the fixed residence in at land titles? And then I guess by extension, the question regarding how the back taxes are how they're tracked, if they're filed as a lien on title, or if it's just tracked within the town office? And how would it, how would a potential purchaser normally know that there's back taxes on the property that they're considering?
So handling.
Thank you, sir, and through you to all of council. The so the the individual plaid, excuse me, pad placements within manufactured housing parks within the town of Hinton and in most communities where you're paying a pad rental are not subdivided out, so they don't have individual title issued. So to the question of counsel asked to check, it's we track it. And with the cooperation of certain property owners, they may assist us, and this property owner operator has indicated a willingness to cooperate in the future with the town, but it's really left to us. In the case of any, anybody looking to purchase a rental manufactured home within a rental park, they can contact the town with the roll number for the property or the address of the property, and we can do a essentially a tax notice, and we can let them know the status of taxes on this. And so if individuals, these tend to be an affordable option for some individuals. So if individuals are looking to purchase this with cash or with lines of credit, so they're not involving lawyers, not involving realtors, they are doing this themselves, I would encourage them to spend the twenty dollars and ask for a tax.
All right. What's it called? Sorry, I just went blank.
Sorry. We can, we can pull a tax notice and and give the history and the status of taxes, anything, anything that's delinquent and where the status is at for that property owner. So at least they can knowingly then negotiate with the seller.
Yeah, follow up, Mr. Chair. Absolutely. So when would Mr. Polichuk have been made aware that there were back taxes owing on property that he had purchased?
So, sorry, sir, I'm just reading in the attachment. So in the email from this property owner, he indicates that he bought it in two thousand and eight. And I do know from staff, there was some discussion with him regarding the status of back taxes owed and where he was at. And that led then, as I mentioned, to the two thousand and seventeen payment of one hundred and six dollars and sixty-three cents. I believe from the finance department, it was in the early two thousand teens that he was made aware of the back taxes owed.
Thank you. I'm good for now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Stashak. Counsel, any further questions? Yeah, Counsel Reese.
Thank you, sir. I would like to move that council accept option one. Is it necessary for me to read that aloud?
Yeah, I'd like actually for this one, yep.
So I would like to move that council approves request from Conrad Polachak to waive eighteen hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents of the property taxes owed for number two, one four five East River Road roll one zero zero two zero, and that the town accepts a payment of fifteen hundred dollars prior to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two to clear the remaining back taxes and penalties as well as the levied twenty twenty-two property tax payment. And if I may speak to this.
Absolutely.
You know, I'm hoping that this will encourage people who are buying trailers to to come to the town and check and see if there are any back taxes owed. I'm hoping that it'll encourage trailer park managers to declare to somebody who's purchasing a trailer that there there are taxes owed. I know that Conrad has been quite diligent at paying his taxes since he's owed this, owned this trailer. So I'm hoping that council will go with me on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Reese, Counsel Stashak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could be that I'm misinterpreting it, but from the timeline that that I C O handling gave and my reading of it, these are all taxes and penalties that were incurred since Mr. Polichuk owned this property. I guess, can I get clarification on that first?
I can't hear. Please, can you turn the mic on?
So sorry, sir. Again, I will indicate the the understanding of of myself is that a portion of these taxes owed pre-existed the property owners acqua- acquiring this property, these improvements. The majority, however, are his and the penalties are his. And I do wish to respectfully just clarify Counselor Race's statement in that this individual has simply only paid his two thousand and seventeen tax payment that you see there. He has been in an ongoing debate with administration regarding the the status of those pre-existing, and he has not paid. So that's so many of these penalties and interests that you see accruing are so many of these penalties and interests that you see accruing are frankly of his own doing.
Can I follow up or can I continue then? Thank you for that clarification. So a couple of concerns. Uh, Mister Polichuk asserts that uh uh, that the town bears some responsibility and that it was the town clerk's negligence to not put the property up for tax au-auction after three years of being paid. Though I concur, I would say that's actually lucky on Mister Polichuk's part, as he may have completely lost all the equity in the in the property. At this point, I'm not inclined to support the motion. Uh, I feel that it it although it's not a huge amount of money, it is a tax burden that is being transferred from the person who it rightly belongs to to the rest of the citizens of Hinton. We still need to create the revenue that we need to run our programs, provide the services that we provide. Uh, and if we're going to waive a portion of these outstanding taxes, they have to be picked up somewhere else. Um, I I guess I would ask for for an explanation or justification maybe from administration why they're recommending that council take this action. In my experience, it's not been a recommendation to waive uh outstanding taxes as they were accrued with the owner's knowledge, and this doesn't seem to be any different.
Thank you, sir. Um, it it is brought forward and and actually correctly is supported at this time by administration, by myself at the request of the property owner. It uh it is determined that it meets the majority of the taxes, and it was his offer, but it was the majority of the taxes owed, and the town would be losing the interest penalties over the years. Um, that said, it doesn't fully cuff. So the taxes you see, the taxes and requisition equal just about nineteen hundred dollars. And so a-administration had included on page fifty-six of the agenda package option two, and option two had contemplated the possibility of a different waiver amount which would necessitate, essentially it's a counteroffer if you will, that would necessitate a a motion that uh in this case, if if I understand the questions of counsel correctly, that potentially the waiver could be reduced and the payment from the property owner could be increased to equal. We have to offset the amount owing to clear this so that it doesn't proceed to the tax sale, and it's it's the recommendation of administration that we clear it, um, whether that's in any portion of that is waived, or whether he pays entirely, but that we not continue on in this uh delinquent situation, and simply, I believe, gonna be in a situation where we're debating with a property owner in future years again.
Here's then, Counselor Stashak, can you follow up?
A follow-up statement, if I may, Mister Chair. Uh, unfortunately, I can't support the proposed motion. I I, like Counselor Taylor, I'm concerned about setting precedent, and I feel it's it's uh it's an improper precedent to set uh to waive uh outstanding taxes and tax penalties for property owners in the in the community. They, property owners should be fully aware that their taxes owing on the properties that they own and that they have an obligation to make sure those are paid. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Stashak. Counsel, Counsel Taylor.
Yeah, I I was going to support this until I realized that uh this individual hasn't paid very much of his taxes uh since he's owed this uh this property. And uh, I don't uh, I don't support it because of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Taylor. I have myself in queue. I I have the same mind. Um, I I appreciate the report. Um, I was under the understanding that the majority, or at least some of them, were mostly on the previous owner. But learning what I've learned this evening, the fact that he's purchased it in two thousand and eight and has accumulated this much is not on. I mean, the amount that that actual other owner owed was very minimal compared to what this property owner owes, and you know, I I think we've set precedent already in in many other um, requests of this that were denied. Um, you know, and to to consider this, I I just, I can't support it. The fact that the matter is that the majority are are on his own. Um, and that he's only paid one year of taxes in twenty seventeen, I believe, and and been negligent on the rest as well. Um, it, this is not fair to the rest of our community and taxpayers, honestly. Um, he has a responsibility, uh, plain and simple, and um, yeah, that's how I feel. Thank you. Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Mister Chair. All the new information that I'm getting right now and listening to you speak, you know, I was under the impression that you know, tax money had been paid, you know, for several years. So, sir, I would like to withdraw my motion.
Uh, all right, uh, I believe we need a motion to to withdraw. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir, and and uh essentially would just ask for a vote on that.
Yep, okay. So counsel, we have a uh request to withdraw this motion. Uh, gonna ask for a vote to in favor or opposed, so all those in favor to withdraw. And that is carried unanimously. All right, counsel, is there any other matters for this? Counsel Stashak. Oh, Counsel Reese, don't never, don't get, there we go.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I'd like to move that council denies the request from Conrad Polichuk to waive one thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents of the property taxes owed for number two one forty-five East River Road roll one, zero, zero, two, zero, and that the town does not accept a payment of fifteen hundred dollars prior to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two to clear the remaining back taxes and penalties as well as the levied twenty twenty-two property tax payment. And that's uh option three. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Stashak. Any want to speak to it or?
No, I think I've spoken to my concerns already and the reasoning for that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, counsel, we have a motion on the floor. I would like to quickly speak to it, and it 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 really boils down to, and Counsel Reese uh spoke to this earlier, but it is on the property owner to um to educate themselves if they're going to be buying a piece of property that, you know, to to uncover all the stones, and if there's taxes and, you know, and and I I realize that sometimes money is uh tight, but this is a reason why realtors and this is why lawyers get involved, because all of these things would have come about. And and Mister Polichuk was here and stated, you know, it was kind of a on a whim, I was selling it, wanted to buy it, and uh was excited to get it, but unfortunately didn't uh didn't do his homework, uh, and and it's unfortunate for him, but uh I will be in favor of this motion. Thank you. All right, counsel, any other debate? Before I call this a question then? All right, so Counsel Stashak moves that council denies the request from Conrad Polichuk to waive eight, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents of the property taxes owed for number two, one forty-five East River Road roll one, zero, zero, two, zero, and that the town does not accept a payment of fifteen hundred dollars prior to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two to clear the remaining back taxes and penalties as well as the levied twenty twenty-two property tax payment. Counsel, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel or I C O Handlin. All right, counsel, so that brings us to finishing up our last uh action item. So we've moved to adjourn, and then we'd be moving into our committee of the whole meeting. So counsel, motion to adjourn? Counsel LeBarge.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Counsel LeBarge. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, everybody. All right, uh, thank you, everybody. I'd like to uh start by, the town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that is located on tree six territory and maintain nation region number four. These are the traditional territories and ancestral lands of indigenous peoples, including the Plains Cree First Nations, Senewatchi, Winewak, Rocky Mountain First Nations, Stony, Sutina, Dakota, Disaline, Soto, the Mountain Matee, the Mechee, and many other communities that continue to enrich the land on which the town of Hinton was established. And with that sentiment, I'd like to call to order this committee of the whole meeting for July twelfth, twenty twenty-two at D six twenty-four. Counsel, adoption of the agenda. Yes, Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I'd like to move that we adopt the committee of the whole agenda for July twelfth.
Okay, and is there any additions at all before? Sorry, I missed that part of it. All right, Counsel Stashak.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I would like to request to add a closed session C E O recruitment discussion, please.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Stashak. Counsel Reese, are you okay with that and would like to adjust your uh motion to be amended? All right, thank you, Counsel Reese. We're looking for uh, yes, a motion to commit the committee of the whole agenda as amended. Counsel, all those in favor? And that is passed unanimously. Uh, citizens minute, citizens minute with counsel. Any citizens citizens wish to speak? The uh virtual, fair, thank you. We have no delegations and presentations. We're going to move on to reports from administration. Five point one draft bylaw number eleven sixty-nine, youth, Hinton Youth Advisory Council, I C O Hamlin.
Thank you, sir, and I'll actually hand this off at this time to Heather Mark, and Heather is going to take us through, starting on page three of twenty-six in your committee of the whole agenda package. This is draft bylaw eleven sixty-nine, Hinton Youth Advisory Council.
Thank you. Ms. Marks.
Thank you. Good evening, committee. So in accordance with the council committee's bylaw ten seventy, the fourth amendment, the terms of reference for all committees of council must be updated every four years at maximum. For this reason, before you today, we have the youth council bylaw and a significantly updated terms of reference with tracts changes. So due to the nature of the changes to the terms of reference, it was the advice of a previous legislative services coordinator that a new bylaw with amended terms of reference be attached and implemented, and thus rescinding the original bylaw eleven twenty-eight. In addition to housekeeping items, which include ensuring the proper use and capitalization of defined terminology, we've clarified the job titles that are accountable as administration to facilitating the committee. These positions are the operations and programming manager with the museum and the youth center coordinator with the town. Another change committee will notice is that the articles of the terms of reference have been arranged to reflect that of contemporary town bylaws for consistency. Now, the major changes which administration was directed necessitated this new bylaw are the extensive amendment, including first, clarifying that administrative contacts will no longer serve as the chair of meetings. This is following input from counselors, race, and Haas who serve on the committee. It must be the youth counselors that are assigned this leadership role legislatively, uh, and this change is reflected in section five roles and responsibilities throughout. The second major change is reflected in section seven and nine. Uh, and this is on attendance requirements that are clarified for the youth counselors in accordance with bylaw ten seventy-four, uh, which is also informed by the municipal government act, section one hundred and seventy-five. The third revision is a schedule of four years is stipulated in the bylaw and councils committees. We've added to terms of reference to ensure compliance on behalf of the designated administrative contacts and mitigating confusion going forward, just to ensure that every four years we're doing these revisions, and this is section ten. In section eleven, there were two definitions which were created in the terms of reference, one for the bursary fund and one for youth counselor. The report mistakenly says section ten. I'd like to point out this discrepancy. Thank you for your understanding. And lastly, most significantly, uh, we've acquired the input of the youth counselors themselves extensively on this item to clarify volunteer hour requirements that tie into bursary fund eligibility. So the previous bylaw stipulated volunteering four times annually. To clarify the interpretation of this item, administration has proposed that language reflect volunteer hours reflect at minimum half the quantity of hours spent in monthly meetings over the course of a given term. For example, at present, youth counselors currently spend twenty hours in meetings annually and are thus normally required to complete ten hours. There is an exception this year as we're coming out of the pandemic. This language is proposed um and crafted to encourage increased participation moving forward in the community for H Y M C as we increase our notoriety and our caliber with membership. And the youth counselors continue to benefit from community opportunities that did not exist a year ago. The revision of the bylaw in terms of reference was an initiative of the current youth council where their stakeholder input was provided as a meaningful engagement opportunity to create positive impact in municipal procedures. Revising the terms of reference for clarity mitigates any potential risk regarding the interpretation of eligibility for the bursary funds. Thank you, and I can take any questions the committee has.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. All right, counsel, any questions for administration on this matter? So I'd like to speak to real quickly. Um, as part of that process, Counsel Reese and I, you know, um, I gotta say that the youth were it was a great conversation, especially around the um uh consecutive missing of meetings. They took into account what it previously was to what, how many meetings you actually really are going to uh attend. Uh, because we only do once a month, and it's only what, I think, eight, eight, we, uh, eight meetings, and they felt that you know, the missing of two consecutive ones, that you would lose your bursary, and and I, you know, appreciated that. They, it was they that uh the the council, youth council that decided on that, you know, and uh to be accountable, right? They didn't want people missing half the meetings and still getting their bursary. Uh, so I thought that was really, really, uh, I think, uh, a lot of good accountability integrity of the group for that. Um, I also appreciate the fact that we have a lot of youth that want to volunteer, and the fact that it was a little unclear, and and quite frankly, some of our youth are very busy with other activities, so to do four uh consecutive, it was kind of unclear. It might have been a little bit tougher, but now knowing the hours and they can spend more hours doing other, you know, certain things, it made it more flexible for them. Uh, so I really appreciate this coming forward and with administration. So counsel, any other questions or comments or directions? Counsel LeBarge.
I move that council direct administration to bring draft bylaw number eleven sixty-nine youth advisory council of the August second, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of council as presented.
Thank you, Counsel LeBarge. Would you like to speak to it?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. All right, counsel, we have a motion or a direction on the floor. Anyone want to speak to it, debate? All right, then I'll call to question. That committee direct administration to bring draft bylaw number eleven sixty-nine into the youth advisory council to the August second, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of council as presented. Counsel, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Marks. All right, and moving on then to our second report, five point two automated traffic enforcement, twenty twenty dash two oh two annual report. I'll hand that over to uh I C O Hamlin.
Thank you, sir. Through you to all of counsel on page nineteen of the council's committee of the whole, or excuse me, the committee's agenda package here this evening. Uh, we do have our covering report and the director of protective services is with us as well. I'll uh just go through this very quickly. The recommended action being that administration recommends that council receive the automated traffic enforcement, two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one annual report is information. A bit of background, um, the committee receives for information an annual report on the automated traffic enforcement program that's been in place in the town of Hinton since two thousand and seven. Global Traffic Group Limited has been the contract provider since its original inception. Uh, this report provides an overview of the A T E program operating within Hinton municipal boundaries. Uh, there was no annual report prepared in twenty twenty, so the report here encompasses both twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. and provides details regarding the, uh, the program. There are provincially mandated regulations in case when A T E is provided. Um, the entire A T E program is currently being reviewed by the province with recommendations anticipated for December two thousand twenty-two. So in, uh, July of this month, administration in conjunction with the Detachment Commander, the R C M P reviewed the current enforcement zones to justify or reestablish the use of A T E and specific locations here in the town of Hinton. Uh, the zones were validated by the R C M P and, uh, still being, uh, areas of concern for traffic speed enforcement. If, uh, undertaken by our contractor, uh, has been shared by myself to counsel over the last, uh, week or so is, uh, uh, global has not been too frequently in the, uh, in the town of Hinton. Uh, less than ten hours per month over the last three months. And, uh, he, our Director of Protective Services may be able to speak to that as well. But, uh, with that, the, uh, report is attached on pages twenty-one to twenty-six. And, uh, administration, uh, both Mac and myself are available to answer any questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I C O Hamlin. Welcome, Mr. Bojep. Uh, we have a question from Counsel Stewart. Counsel Taylor, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. The total tickets issued for, um, this contractor were twelve eleven. To put that in pers- into perspective, um, what was the number, uh, for the R C M P bylaw that was issued in, uh, two thousand twenty-one? Do you have that number?
Uh, through the chair to, uh, all of counsel and Counselor Taylor, uh, bylaw issued in twenty twenty-one. Uh, is that the question? You said twenty eleven.
I'm sorry, I meant twenty, uh, twenty-one, sorry.
Uh, no, no worries. Uh, bylaw or protective services here issued four hundred and sixty-nine uh, tickets in twenty twenty-one, and the R C M P issued seven hundred and fifty-five, uh, tickets in twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Taylor. Counsel, uh, any other questions on this report for administration? Counsel LaBarge?
Um, keep asking, but never get any revenue information as it relates to this program. And I just, I just, I, I keep going back to initial presentation that was done early on after we were elected where they were, it was indicated or suggested anyhow that we were losing money in this program. And, uh, I, I think it's probably time to have a look at that. And, um, I just, I don't understand how we're not sort of measuring to some of the performance indicators that uh, the provinces talked about at all of these surveillance locations. And I mean, the, 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 the report just doesn't contain any of the information that I'd want to know about.
Thank you, Counsel LaBarge. Any comment from administration or any other?
I, uh, Mr. Chair, I could, I could speak to that. Uh, in, uh, there has been a declining revenue, uh, from Automatic Traffic Enforcement. Uh, in twenty eighteen, just for example, there was four hundred and thirty-six thousand and, uh, two hundred and sixteen dollars issued in fines. And the expense of operation was two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and change. Um, so that there's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of revenue that year. In twenty twenty-one, in contrast, there was a hundred and two thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-two, um, issued in fines. There was, we only actually realized sixty-one thousand dollars, uh, in revenue or expenses to the program, sorry, but there was a hundred and twenty-seven, seven ninety-eight in bad debt. Uh, so we actually operated at a loss of eighty-six thousand dollars. Uh, this year to date, as was mentioned by I C A Johannlin, uh, the A T E Global Traffic Services has not been very active in Hinton in the last few months. Uh, to date, we've issued three hundred and thirty-three, or sorry, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars worth of, uh, citations, and we have the expense of the program has been thirty-eight hundred dollars. So it's definitely a decreasing revenue and projecting out for the next six months. Uh, we will not meet our target that we, uh, had in our budget for this year. The cut, the program is costing us money.
I have Counsel Taylor and then myself. Go ahead, Counsel Taylor.
So, uh, what would you suggest then for, uh, a decision point regarding this program? Um, how would, how would we get or come, come to that decision point? You, you bring some of this information together in a package to us with a bunch of options? Or I'm just asking the question?
Through the chair to Counsel Stuart Taylor and the rest of counsel, that's very good question. There are two, uh, action items outstanding on the action pending list. Uh, M D two, two, three, five, which directs, uh, admin to bring forth a report with safety and revenue implications of terminating the A T E, uh, program upon expiration of the extension within global traffic with global traffic at the end of twenty twenty-one. That contract was actually extended and expires on September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. Or twenty-three, sorry, I wrote that down wrong, twenty-three. Um, and also item M D one eight eight four is directing administration to invite requests for proposals, an R F P to bid on the A T E contract. And that decision has been on hold now until December first, twenty twenty-two, when the A T E program will have more guidelines from the province. Now, um, in our existing contract, there is a termination clause. Um, it's Article fifteen, uh, specifically fifteen-one, where either party may terminate this agreement by providing written notice to the other party of its desire to terminate. And such termination shall be effective as of the date of notice is received by the other party or the date set up by this notice, whichever is later. So the, the contract could be terminated. That is not a decision that administration would make. That would, that would be up to counsel. Uh, there would be financial implications, although with the declining revenue that we are realizing from this program, um, it may be minimal. The, um, the program historically has paid for, uh, community grants and safety initiatives within town like crosswalks and lights at, uh, intersections and, and school zones. Uh, but, and there is money in that reserve still. Uh, but it is a declining revenue. There's no doubt about that.
Thank you, Mr. Bojep. Any, I guess my, of myself, um, I guess I, I have, you know, definitely concerns over the program itself. And I guess one question, and, and it may or may not, but the fact that they've only, if global has only been in our community for what, less than you said, ten hours in the last three months, one, ten hours a month in the last three months? Is that one in breach of the contract? Is that the minimum? Or is that, have they, have they fulfilled what the requirement of the contract is? Um, I'm not familiar with the contract.
Uh, through the chair to answer that question, uh, the I didn't see anywhere in the contract where it specified the minimum number of hours they have to work. But they, in previous years, they worked several, several hundred hours over the, over a year, uh, in town. Whereas now they're spending anywhere between six to ten, twelve hours a month.
So if I may, then, um, you know, I'm, I'm all for having the conversation, uh, as a counsel to whether or not this program is is, is needed, that we are suffering a loss, whether we continue with it. I however, would like to look at possible options. It's not a program that I necessarily would like to scrap. What I'd let personally, what I'd like to see is more ownership of it. That if we are going to have this, uh, a part of our community, you know, what are the options of actually owning it, not contracting it? Then we have more control over the, the, that style of enforcement. Uh, I've heard from many community members, you know, that, um, there are many areas in our community. Um, Mountain Street, uh, Switzer, uh, where speeding is common. And these are areas that, you know, because we're looking at the majority of these, these ticketed are from out of our, uh, out of our community. We're getting, you know, people from other provinces traveling. Um, and unfortunately, we're also, they've, they're not required to pay the ticket. That's the biggest, that bad debt too, where they, it's not tied to the license. They have no incentive whatsoever to pay it. So, you know, from, from my perspective, if having potentially this be more a community based, you know, that it focuses on keeping our community safe within, um, that would be my preference to have that look at it, to see if can, and I, I believe that other communities do own it. Um, of course, there are some costs, startup costs and everything, but that would be something that I would be, you know, at least inclined to, to learn a little bit more about. Um, you know, I, I take from, uh, our previous staff sergeant that any tools that we can offer to assist R C M P Protective Services, keep our community safe traffic-wise, you know, it, they'll take them, you know, and is that an option? So, um, but I definitely, you know, like I said, would be in agreement of having a further conversation on whether this, this is the way to go. So, thank you. Uh, I have Counsel Stasich, Counsel Reese, and then Counsel Taylor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. With the confirmation that this program is not only not generating revenue, it's actually costing the town money and continuing to cost the town money. Uh, this is something I think needs to get before counsel sooner rather than later. Counsel's been trying to push to have this come back for some type of a discussion and decision, but it's been thwarted by the, the province dictating the changes can't be made to any existing program until, until their report findings come out, and I believe it's December of this year. So that was one of the things that was preventing us from having it come back. And then, uh, the current, uh, contract with the, uh, with the, uh, Automated Traffic Enforcement Contractor, uh, was extended. Um, but I, I really do feel that we need to have a conversation about terminating the contract and understanding what the implications of that are, so the council can make a decision and give direction to, uh, to administration regarding whether that's the action council wants to take or not. So with that, I'd like to make a motion if I could, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
Uh, I'd like to move to direct administration to bring a report regarding termination of the existing Automated Traffic Enforcement Contract to the July twenty-sixth Committee of the Whole Meeting. You know, if I could speak to it, and I'll, I'll give administration an opportunity to let me know if that date's inappropriate or not, if they need extra time. I just, I think it needs to get before counsel quickly. If we're hemorrhaging money, I don't think it's responsible to continue to let it happen. And we need to, we need to take some type of action to put a stop to it. The reason I picked July twenty-sixth, and I know that is our next Committee of the Whole Meeting. Uh, I don't feel that this report should be very extensive. I think it would just be, uh, you know, that some of the implications for early termination, what that might mean and a recommendation from administration. But if the twenty-sixth isn't appropriate, I would look to administration for the earliest possible date that it could come back to counsel. Thank you.
Counsel Stasich, um, I C O Hamlin, any comment?
Uh, thank you, sir. Through you to all of counsel, actually just texting with Mac here, but he hasn't got back to me, just, uh, wondering if that's enough time, um. I, I believe we could. I, I do appreciate, uh, the clarification from counsel that it's high level, that it's, it's essentially to bring the implications back for the consideration of counsel with a, a recommendation. And, uh, just a reminder that, uh, for that, uh, meeting date, which is, uh, July twenty-sixth, uh, essentially, we have to have the, uh, we have to have the report done by next Thursday evening. So I believe, and I see, uh, I see the, uh, director shaking his head, so I, I, and it's not shaking in the wrong direction. So I'm going to assume that that means that, uh, he's, uh, he's okay to bring that back in this time, and we'll keep it, uh, short and succinct.
If I, if I may.
Mr. Chair, oh, I think, Mr. Yes.
If I may, Chair, uh, the motion that was just made is very, very similar to the direction, the M D two, two, three, five. Uh, so it really would be just moving up that date from the end of twenty twenty-one to July.
Hold on a second there, Counselor. Okay, Counsel Stasich.
Uh, thank you. I, I appreciate that, uh, Chief Dubo Drop. Uh, I, I, and it is very similar. The only, the only difference is that that one in M D two, two, three, five stipulates upon the expiration of the extension. Uh, this, we're not going to wait until the expiration of the extension. We want to have a, a discussion about it while the contract's still current.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Stasich. Um, Counsel Reese, sorry, I had to bump you because I needed the queue in the queue. Uh, if you could push your button, please, you were in the queue. Thank you.
I'll have to wait. My question has nothing to do with the motion on the floor.
All right, thank you. So Counsel, we do have a motion. Uh, is there any discussion, debate over the direction? Okay, so if I could have that up on the screen, please. All right, so, uh, Counsel, we're going to call then to question to Counsel Stasich directs to administration to bring a report regarding termination of the existing Automated Traffic Enforcement Contract to the July twenty-sixth Committee of the Whole Meeting. Counsel, all those in favor? And that is passed unanimously. Thank you, Counsel Stasich. Counsel Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to, um, administration. Mac, if you don't know the answer to this, you know, you can certainly, uh, get back to us. Would you know the cost of, um, signage? That would indicate, you know, what the, um, speed limit is and also flashing lights. I've seen in other communities, you're driving down the street and, oh my goodness, flashing lights just start and your speed is indicated. So, uh, would, would you happen to know the pricing on any of that?
Uh, through the chair to Counsel Reese, uh, not offhand. No, I don't. Uh, signage and, and lighting uh, typically is handled through the roads budget. Uh, we do the enforcement half of it, but they do the infrastructure. Um, I, I would not know that offhand. I'm sorry.
Okay.
And if I may, I think it's a great question. I think it's a question for dealing with that contract first, and then what the next steps are to, as if, if we were to terminate, then where are we at? You know, I think that, but it's a great question that, you know, probably be asked in the future. So thank you, Counsel Reese. Counsel Stasich.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Follow-up, uh, kind of related to Counsel Reese's question. Um, there was that, at, at one time, the town had those, uh, portable trailer units that were outfitted with, uh, radar, not photo radar, but radar and, uh, speed display signs. And I actually had great feedback from citizens and people in the community that those really did make a difference, that, that when they were going through a region that they travel through regularly and they were not paying attention, and that sign would pop up and flash at them that their speed is fifty when the speed limit's forty. It actually made a difference. So I guess my question is, whatever happened to those? Uh, and is it possible to, uh, get them back out again?
Uh, through the chair to answer that question to Counselor, oh, Stasich, uh, they still exist. They are housed at I S B. Uh, Roads Department uses them quite frequently in, in construction zones. Uh, we also have used them recently on mountain when we had, uh, public complaints about speeding in the, uh, playground zone on mountain. Uh, so they still exist and they still get used for that purpose.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I'd like to go on a follow-up though, and, and it's again, the experience the experience I get when I go to F C M or we go to A M, that there are some great um, and it, d- different products out there that are, and, and I, it, it brings me to, I'm sure most of us have gone to Jasper. And soon as you come into Jasper, they have a uh, stationary one right there, links when you're going faster. And, and it does, it really slows you down. And, and I agree with Counselor Stasich. There was, I, I got great uh, feedback with those. And, and I think these are the types of things that, you know, when we are potentially gonna move forward, I think we can't ignore the fact. You know, it's one is that maybe this program is no longer viable. We'll take a look at that on July twenty sixth. Um, and depending on that decision, then where we go from there in traffic safety in our community. You know, and it could be a variety of different things, whether it's signage, uh, whether it's speed bumps in certain areas potentially. Uh, I think there's a lot of opportunities uh, out there that we could look at, that we do still could utilize. Uh, as we saw this evening, we have six hundred and eighty thousand, well, less than that, because we are using some of it for Gerard. But we do have some reserves in place from that program that potentially could look at, you know, uh, uh, different initiatives for our community that way. So uh, I think it's, uh, you know, a positive way moving forward. So, thank you. Counsel, any other questions or, or direction on this matter at this time? Uh just, whoops. See. Sorry, pardon me. So the recommendation, I'm, I'm not sure at this time we've already kind of provided, if, if there's any recommendations that you have uh, on this particular report, I C O Hanlon, we have two recommendations either to accept it as information or alternate direction to administration. We've already had a direction to relook at it. Um is there anything else that was required in this?
Sir, nothing more that would be required at this time. We placed this on the town's website for, as public information. So we would be looking for uh, simply council adopting it as information.
As information. Okay, thank you. All right, so council. Any appetite for direction here? Counsel of the bars.
Uh, I move to accept uh, the report as information.
It's option number one. You're, that's, okay, thank you, Counsel of the bars. Great, and I'll just uh, wait till we bring it up on the screen. I'm just gonna read the option one. I think that's what Counsel of ours is going for. So, um, council, uh, we had a direction that administration recommends that council receive the automated traffic enforcement twenty twenty two and report as information. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, uh, administration. Any other comments or uh, questions on this matter before we uh, move on to our reporting? Counsel? All right, then we'll move on to council reports and we'll start with uh, Counselor Taylor.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor and uh, Counselor Stasich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Counsel of the bars.
Uh, nothing much to report. It, uh, nothing much to report, but uh, I did wear my Wild Mountain T-shirt. Uh, it's on this weekend. This is our community festival. So if you haven't bought your tickets yet, go get them. Uh, I think Sam Roberts uh, headlines on Saturday. So go get your Wild Mountain tickets.
Thank you, Counsel of the bars. Counselor Race.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Only one thing to report. Last week I had my first um land acknowledgement committee meeting, and that would be with Counselor Magoon and with Heather Mark. We did come up with a I don't wanna say a tentative, but we did come up with a statement that I will be taking out into the community for the next couple of weeks and then reporting back um, in August to our little committee. And that's it, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Race. Uh, and for myself, nothing much to report. Um I did, however, we've, we're moving forward. Uh, as we all know, in the library, we hired a manager. Uh, I think we're also looking at hiring assistant manager yet again, or again, to replace uh, the one person. And then uh, we um, are uh looking at some trainings. We got some really good feedback from Y R L and, and our contractor that did a, our um assessment of the uh, services. And so we've, I think, come to a great uh, plan for adding some training for the, our administrative staff. So looking forward to that. Um, starting probably in the fall is what we're looking at. So that's all I have to report. All right, and moving on then to uh, I C O Hanlon, uh, reporting the status reports.
Thank you, sir. Uh, reporting, I guess, not too much. Um actually, uh, looking forward to Wild Mountain uh, this weekend. Uh, gonna take the camper out and enjoy three days of uh, of the festival. Um, well, two days plus the night before.
Mm-hmm.
Um, looking forward to that event and, and uh, meeting more of my friends here in Hinton. Uh, status report, I very pleased, absolutely can't tell you how pleased to announce that the swimming pool opens at six thirty tomorrow morning. Um, so uh, excited. Um, will continue to provide updates to council as, as that comes together. So uh, it, it's a bit of a performance issue with uh, some of the work that was done during the shutdown. So uh, a bit of warranty and follow up, but uh, uh, I, I appreciate council's patience. And, and in fairness, I, I really appreciate the majority of the residents of the town of Hinton that have been very patient through all of this. Um it was just certain safety matters regarding the temperature of the water uh, that just rendered it u- us unable to reopen at this time. But tomorrow morning at six thirty and people should expect to hear from uh, staff regarding uh, rescheduling of the uh, of the uh, swimming lessons. Uh, did wanna just for the sake of anybody listening and for council, just a reminder that we have counseled. We'll be canceling next Tuesday's council meeting, July nineteenth. And uh, there's been an ongoing uh, matter and council's aware of it, and some of the residents uh, are aware of the status of the football field. So uh, I, I do wanna share and, and do wanna thank our, our parks team that are on it now. Um it, it, it did come to my attention that for forty years, we've used this field for fireworks. And so for forty years, we've done a, 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 I believe, a very good job cleaning up after the fireworks. So just a, a reminder for residents that if uh, if clubs or teams or any of these uh user groups are, are looking to use this, there is a requirement to enter into a use agreement with the town of Hinton. If we aren't in a use agreement, we won't prioritize cleaning this field up. Um, because we've got other things to prioritize and to take care of. So when uh, when sports groups, particularly in this case, the, when the uh, the local football club wishes to use the field, they need to enter into a use agreement with the town of Hinton. So we know that we have to clean it up. So I do appreciate that Public Works is doubling down and getting staff out there. We are vacuuming and raking and mowing that and to clean up uh, just what's left over from the Canada Day celebrations. So uh, do appreciate their uh, their uh, efforts in that, in that fashion. And that covers my status report, sir.
Thank you, uh, I C O Hanlon. So I guess that's a, I guess, a question to you is, so was it typical, has there's been a change to the user, like to, to, for the football field or how has that worked in the past?
Um, sorry, the, the hint minor football has filled out the user agreement and uh, has has let us know. And, and unfortunately, the last one we had was from the beginning of May to the beginning of June. And so that's when it lapsed and we were unaware of desires to continue the team utilizing the field. And as I was saying, it's just important for any of our user groups to uh, aid to contact staff and let them know because our staff were not aware of concerns on this field. Much of that was coming to council. Um, and that's set out in the user agreement. It's very specific on who was, who was to contact and, and discuss field conditions. It'd be akin in this case to every minor hockey coach contacting council because they have concerns about the ice surface that, you know, it just would not be appropriate. Uh, so it is very clear in the user agreement, but more particularly, when we enter into these user agreements for any fields, for any of our facilities, we then prioritize staff, equipment. And in this case, cleaning up after at Canada Day. So, um, again, to, to, to my team out there, they've they're, they're, they're getting on it, they're cleaning it up and uh, we'll uh, we'll we'll continue to work with the group and very excited. I do understand through the coach that it was a successful uh, spring, spring month. And uh, they're looking to do some more here.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, I C O Hanlon. And it is exciting. I appreciate all the work that has gone into, you know, and, and for the pool to reopen. And thank you to the community for your patience. Um, uh, much appreciated. But uh, you know, business as usual tomorrow morning at six thirty. So that's fantastic. So, excellent. All right, council. Uh, so we do have one closed session matter. So if we could uh, have a a motion to go into closed session with a five minute break. Counsel of the bars.
Moved to go into this closed session with a five minute break.
All right. Thank you, Counsel of the bars. All those in favor? Excellent. Thank you.